Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, March 31st, 2025. Thanks, everybody, for joining us here in the council chambers, and thanks to everybody who is watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any coverings, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, thanks to everybody for joining us tonight. Council, our first order of business is to adopt an agenda for this evening. And under our introductory items, we have three items under introductory. Item 2.1 is the introduction of new employees, and I think we've got three different departments introducing new employees tonight. Got a proclamation for National Public Health Week, and then we will do a summary of the interim city manager's performance evaluation that we just completed. Under our consent business, and Councilmember Muah has consent agenda tonight, we have 11 items. And under our item four hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we've got two public hearings. One, item 4.1, is regarding the right-of-way permitting and management ordinance amendment, and then a public hearing on item 4.2 regarding a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for Rainbow Midwest. We have, under our organizational business, item 5.1, we'll have a public safety update from Chief Hodges, and we'll wrap up with item 5.2, our city council policy and issue update. Council, any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, I will move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero, noting that Councilmember Carter is not with us this evening. So we have an agenda, and we will move on with it. And we will start with item 2.1, the introduction of new employees. As I said, I think we have three different groups that are going to be introduced. Did you draw straws about who gets to go first, or? Very good. Mr. Burnert? Am I saying that correctly, Burnert?
Berrent.
Berrent, thank you very much for correcting me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to, it's my privilege, actually, to introduce two of our newest members, our service, facility service technicians. They've been with us for a couple of months now. We're grateful that they're here to help us out. It kind of rounds out our facility staff to help us out with preventive maintenance and things like that of all our city buildings. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Nick Ricks. Nick has got 10 years of HVAC experience with, experience with the company that he came from. We're very appreciative that he's got this experience. It comes in handy working in our facilities department. When Nick is not around working, he enjoys spending time outdoors, fishing, hunting, spend times with his family. Kind of one thing that's known, kind of an unknown fact that Nick is looking forward to is possibly getting a small farm in the future and going that route, so. On that, congra, you know, congratulations, and thank you for choosing the city of Bloomington.
Thank you.
All right. Our next individual, Brandon Genzold. Obviously, he's been with us for two months as well. Comes with 15 years' experience in construction operations management. Also has associate's degree as well. He grew up in Bloomington, loves to spend time outside and working, or playing, or, sorry. Loves to spend time outside of work playing music. And an interesting fact is, one of his first concerts, concerts was Ringo Starr and the All Star Band that was outside the Mall of America. Thanks for picking Bloomington.
Of course, proud to be working here, thank you so much.
Brandon, Nick, thanks much for being with us tonight. Thanks much for your work. I mean, taking out the facilities around here, that's a, that's a big job, and not just the facility we're in, but we know there are many, many facilities that the, the city has to deal with. And so glad to have them in your capable hands. Welcome, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bergeren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have the privilege of introducing two Newport Authority team members tonight. First, I'll start with Ellen Thorp. Ellen is joining the team as an economic development analyst. She graduated from the University of Minnesota with a degree in housing studies, and she came to us from a career in commercial real estate in the private sector, most recently with Colliers. Ellen enjoys reading, traveling, checking out new restaurants, and spending time with family and friends. And this fall is her 10-year anniversary of her cooking club. So welcome, Ellen.
Happy to be here.
Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you.
The next employee I'll introduce is Priscilla Maioa. She is the new business assistant specialist for the port. So this will allow us to do more direct business engagement with the small business owners primarily. Priscilla is joining us as a full-time employee after previously working here as a 2023 Capital Pathways intern in the Community Development Department. She also previously served as the director of the Minnesota Youth Council, where she led youth initiatives and policy advocacy initiatives. Priscilla is excited to support the small business community here in Bloomington, primarily helping small businesses navigating resources, partnerships, and funding opportunities. She's a proud immigrant and native of Lagos, Nigeria.
Good evening.
Very excited to be here and excited to return to Bloomington. It's a great city to work with.
Glad to have you back, thank you. And glad to have you both on the Port Authority staff. They're, they're, they're growing, and they got a lot of work to do. So very happy to have you there and doing business development in the city of Bloomington. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am very excited to introduce Jesse Boland. He is our new elections cemetery and passport specialist in the city clerk's office. Jesse went to Concordia College in St. Paul. He lived in Hawaii for seven years. He currently lives in Lakeville with his husband, and today is their 10-year anniversary. They don't have children, but they enjoy spending lots of times, lots of time with Jesse's three nephews. Jesse loves to travel. He's been to Australia, China, Iceland, Norway, Denmark, France, Greece, Germany, and Spain. Aside from working for the city, he is looking forward to warmer weather and working on his lawn. I will say that Jesse has worked for multiple cities and school districts around our metro area, helping them with elections kind of on a part-time seasonal basis. He's kind of a hot commodity. Several of the city clerks were vying for him, and so we are very, very happy that he chose us in Bloomington to make his permanent home.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, Jesse. Elections, cemeteries, and passports, let's see.
Thought I'd have to bring my shovel.
That is a great, a great combination of things. So welcome to Jesse, thank you very much. So Brandon, Nick, Priscilla, Ellen, and Jesse, I tell all of our new employees, welcome. We're so glad to have you on board, and remind you that now, in so many ways, you are the face of Bloomington for a lot of people. When they think of the city of Bloomington, they usually don't think of the people sitting up here. They think of the people they work with on a daily basis, and that's, that's you folks. So it's a big responsibility, but it's also a, a great chance, and a great chance for you to shine. So thank you much for being with us, and thanks much for being here tonight, and welcome to the city of Bloomington. Great to have you. Absolutely. We will move on, Council. Item 2.1, and it is a proclamation for National Public Health Week, and I will head down to the podium. As I said, this is for National Public Health Week. I see public health folks here. Do you, do you want to come up and join me up here while I read the proclamation? You'll come up in a minute, perfect, sounds good. National Public Health Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2025. Whereas the week of April 7th, 2025 is National Public Health Week, and the theme is "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of making a difference in our home, community, and state. And whereas this year is the 30th anniversary of National Public Health Week, and in the past 30 years, significant strides have been made in public health, including the following successes. The COVID-19 pandemic response with vaccinations, testing, and credible health information. As of May 2023, more than 676 million COVID vaccine doses were administered in the U.S. Youth smoking rates is now at 1.4%, and overall tobacco use, now at 10.1%, dropped to a 25-year low as of October 2024. And routine childhood vaccinations prevented approximately 508 million illnesses, 32 million hospitalizations, and more than 1 million deaths among children born between 1994 and 2023. And whereas, one of the city's three objectives in the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan is to achieve significant improvement in the indices measuring health in the environment, health in people, and health in the community as a whole. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, and people of color populations in Bloomington continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death as compared with the entire population. And whereas, public health professionals work with the community and partners outside of the public health sector, including city staff, first responders, school district staff, and the business community, recognizing that we all need to work together to change health outcomes. And whereas, efforts to modernize the public health system in Minnesota will result in a statewide public health system that prevents disease, protects well-being, and improves the health of all residents regardless of where they live. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Tim Bussie. Do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Bloomington, and call upon the people of this community to observe this week by recognizing how public health has contributed to creating an enduring and remarkable Bloomington, dated this 31st day of March, 2025. And I'm glad we were, we don't have another meeting until the 14th of April, so I'm glad we were able to get this taken care of and make sure that we get this proclamation made. Unfortunately, the, the timing is not the greatest, considering some of the things that, at the, the state and national level. But I think the, the sentiment and the feeling toward national public health and public health in Bloomington remains. So I'm going to invite Dr. Nick Kelly up. Always enjoy listening to Dr. Kelly, and? Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Annabelle Cornblum, our Chair of the Arizona Board of Health.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your proactive, forward-thinking commitment over the years to public health. The community cannot be an enduring, remarkable community where people want to be without a strong commitment to health for its residents. And I'm happy to be a part of that, thank you.
Thank you so very much. And we officially have the proclamation. I don't know if there's anybody with a camera tonight, but we got to do the grip and grin officially, so. Over here, we will do that. Item 2.3 on our agenda is the, the summary of our interim city manager's performance evaluation. And as the city council typically has only one employee, the city manager, and that position is currently being performed by two interim city managers, Elizabeth Tolsmann and Kathleen Hadeen, who were the assistant city managers during the service of the prior city manager. Both interim city managers provided their informed consent for the joint evaluation before the city council. In preparation for the consideration of the next steps, the council desired to evaluate the performance of the interim city managers. And we taught, we had a good conversation, and we made the decision to, to continue the discussion. We recessed the, the closed hearing, and we will reconvene on April 14th for a continued conversation of the evaluation of our city managers. So that is our summary of the, of our performance evaluation so far of our interim city managers. And we'll move right along, just like that. We're adding three, our consent business. Councilmember Muah with our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't heard of any other holds.
311, you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
With that, the only hold I have is for 3.11, which I will hold. So I will move items 3.1 through 3.10 as stated.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero.
And the mayor would just have 3.11, which, given the conversation we had during the closed session, we should, I would, I guess, we should request postponed hold.
I, I think if, if I could make the motion that we would, we would table item 3.11 to an indefinite date.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Muah to table item 3.11 to an indefinite date? No further council discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero. Thank you, Councilmember Muah. Moving on to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. As I mentioned, we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is item 4.1, a public hearing regarding the right-of-way permitting and management ordinance amendment. Brian Hanson is here this evening. Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Just waiting for the presentation here, we'll get started. Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm here before you this evening to talk about some proposed code updates related to right-of-way permitting here in the city. So for some quick background. There we go. So the, previously, we had made changes to the code related to right-of-way permitting in 2023. It was an attempt to streamline the fees and set some baseline fees to simplify the process for applicants as well as for the city. In 2021, there was some federal legislation which really kind of kick-started the installation of fiber-to-home here throughout, in the, in the nation as well as here in Bloomington, and especially, you know, here in the city. And that worked in earnest here in 2024. So as I mentioned previously, we saw four times, four-time percent, or four-time increase in the number of permits that were applied for and processed in 2024 compared to 2021. So we permitted approximately 1.1 million feet of underground work, and 500,000 feet of aerial permits were permitted in 2024. During the last year's permit season, construction season, we did run into some issues related to management of the permits, our permit fee structure, some efficiencies, and timely restoration of the contractor. So in an effort to address this and be more efficient, and hopefully have a better experience for both the applicants as well as the residents of Bloomington, we did come before you in February as a discussion item to talk about some proposed changes, to get your guys' feedback on that. And based on that conversation, as well as conversations I've held with contractors and utility providers, since then, we have the proposed language in front of you this evening for your consideration. So the fours kind of fee, or the four kind of items that are being proposed this evening are related to the fee structure for the permit, for the permits, restoration require requirements, winter moratorium dates, and then removing registration requirements. So I'll touch on both of the, all of these briefly here in a second. So the first one is the fee structure. So as I mentioned before, we currently have a flat fee. That's that $560 per permit, and that allows someone to pull a permit for up to 2,640 linear feet per permit. We also have a separate permit fee for residential and water sewer repairs at $150. Typically, these are less than 100 feet of installation. And then we have a $36 right-of-way permitting processing fee that's also applied to each permit. So the, all those changes to the fee structure are to set a right-of-way underground fee at a base of $150 up to 100 feet. And then for every foot beyond 100 feet, you'd be charged at a 30 cents per foot rate. So if you remember before, when I was before you in February, we had proposed something similar. The rate was 40 cents per foot. Based on the feedback we received from the council and also talking with the utility providers, and also pulling information based on the fees that were collected in 2024 and staff time charge that work, we felt comfortable with adjusting that per-foot fee to 30 cents per foot. In addition, the right-of-way aerial fee is $120 base fee up to 100 feet, and then 15 cents per foot after 100 feet. Again, when we came to you before in February, that was at 20 cents per foot. Using similar analysis, we did feel comfortable reducing that back to 15 cents per foot. The last proposed change is to remove that right-of-way processing permitting fee, just to clean that up as well. And these are listed under the appendix A here. So the result is the right-of-way underground fee for a similar permit of to the, the current maximum length would rise from $596 to just over $900 would be that fee change. However, the aerial fee, which is currently the same fee at that, that $560, would be reduced with this new, with this new fee structure. The reason being is the administrative cost, the review required, the field inspection required for aerial fee, aerial installation is less than underground fee, underground installation, which is why we felt comfortable making those changes in those two permit fees here. The second requirement's related to restoration. So a big thing that we experienced and had a lot of calls from residents on was related to the restoration, the timeliness of the restoration, the quality of the restoration by the contractors that were doing work right-of-way underground work here in the city in 2024. So this is some current code language that we have in place right now. We wanted to give our staff some more tools to be able to enforce this and get more timely restoration for the residents of Bloomington. As a result, we are proposing the following changes to the, to the code to add a maximum of 50,000 total feet of in-progress right-of-way permits per applicant. Or unless authorized by the city engineer, so we do have some leeway to extend that if, if so needed. Additionally, we will require substantial restoration. So when I was before you in February, we didn't have the 75%. We just said that the permits need to be fully restored before additional permits could be issued. There was some conversation, some good comments related to if an applicant was at the end of their installation, and there's, there's obviously a gap between when they can finish drilling and come back and restore. We didn't want to artificially stop them from forward work if they were showing they're making good progress on the restoration. So we changed that to add that 75% because we feel if they've had 75% completed, then they have a process in place to make sure that restoration continues. And as long as they're doing their work and doing that restoration work behind, they can continue uninterrupted with their work, assuming they have additional permits, and so they can continue to work. So that was how we added that 75% in there. And that 50,000-foot linear maximum, that came based on the service area. So one thing we were trying to do is, a typical service area for the fiber providers is between 40,000 and 60,000 linear feet. And we wanted to have a number in there that would allow them to apply for a single permit for a total service area. So again, we have some discretion from the city engineers so we can make that determination to have a single permit as opposed to having them apply for multiple permits with multiple reviews and the administration that's involved with that from the city side as well as from the applicant side. We want to try to simplify that process for both parties. The other thing that we were cognizant of is making sure we didn't artificially restrict the work of other utility providers who also pull permits in the city. So a lot of this is focused on the fiber work that's going on right now, but we also have gas, electric, our cable providers. So we pulled the total footage of those, those providers and what they pulled in 2024, and wanted to make sure that 50,000 would encompass that. So all those providers pulled less than 50,000 total linear feet of permits in 2024. So therefore, we wouldn't be inhibiting their ability to pull multiple permits for multiple times. So if, for some reason, they did exceed that, again, we have that discretion to be able to extend that if need be. The winter moratorium dates, so right now, we, we don't have in code when construction can end. It's kind of based on the, the weather conditions as well as the availability of materials for restoration. So you have a bituminous when they can do that. Typically, it's been around November 15th, sometimes as long as, as November, or as long as Thanksgiving, excuse me, depending on weather. But we didn't have anything in our code that would actually have an end date. So we wanted to add that. And what we're proposing is to have a winter moratorium for November 15th through April 15th or when conditions are unreasonable for such work. This language mirrors what the county has. So by codifying this, we would be, and have the same language as the county. So trying to simplify things for our providers. And like I said, last year, November 15th just happened to be the date that we stopped work in the, in the hard surface excavation due to availability of materials and weather conditions. So just having that in the code to have a little more teeth behind that. And the last big change is related to registration. So currently, we have a language in there that requires an applicant to be registered with the city, and there's a registration fee that's, that's included with this. Since we've had this language in place, which has been in place for a while, the Department of Labor and Industry for the city, or state of Minnesota, excuse me, collects this information, has that available through their website. So our business practice for the past couple of years has been, staff has been going to that website to pull that information to assure that applicants are registered, they have their licensure, that we have their bond and certificate of insurance before permits are issued. So by making this change, we removed the registration language from our code to mirror our business practices because we haven't been collecting this for a while. It does not relieve the applicants of the requirements of the registration. So again, they're still required to be that licenser, licensure. They still are required for the bond, the CLI, and those type of things. And that is referred to other, other places in the code as well. So they're not getting off on requiring those things. It's just cleaning up this registration. So we're not collecting it right now, so we just want to remove that from the code so we're consistent with our business practices. And with that, that's a high-level overview of kind of the four areas that we're looking to get your, your feedback on this evening. And I have a couple of proposed motions before you, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Council, questions of Mr. Hanson on these proposed changes? Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, just have two quick questions. I want to appreciate your responses that you had earlier today. And one of those I just wanted to ask. I know we've had some issues. It's gotten better over the years with folks who've had problems with, you know, we having their property fixed up. This isn't going to change that at all in terms of, of them being able to figure out who would be able to, who's working on their, on their property if they've got a problem, right?
I believe this will simplify things for the residents and for our staff as well. So if we have a single permit for a certain area, if a resident was to call in with a concern about the area, it'll be easier for our staff to be able to figure out who's out there because right now, we have multiple permits, you know, for one area. So it's going to simplify things for that. I will also tell you that we've had, I've had meetings with the, follow the fiber providers and kind of share this information with them. And I believe by having the language in there requiring that restoration to be done prior to additional permits being issued is going to get more compliance. We kind of played a game of cat and mouse last year where they would kind of fall behind. They said, yep, we know about them, we'll get to them, we'll get to them, until it got to a point where we had to shut them down completely. And then we get And then we get compliance because they put all their efforts towards getting that done. And then they'd start up again and we kind of go in that same cycle. So we're trying to avoid that this year. I'm, fingers crossed, I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic in talking to the providers. They have, at least what they've shared with me so far is more of a plan for restoration this year. I think they understand that that's a major point of contention for the city and for the residents and that they need to have a plan in place. So I know for a fact that one of them has two crews dedicated to go right behind with soft surface restoration. I know another one has a contractor on board right now for the hard surface restoration. So when they do a pothole and make a hole in the road, they're going to identify that and send it off to this contractor to have it on a list. So they're supposed to be having a process in place to follow behind. So that along with our fiber webpage, so it's COB or BLM.mn forward slash fiber. Any resident can go on there, there's information on there about the providers. We have our number for engineering as well, and they can always call, we can put them into contact with who's out there. So I'm hopeful that we've learned some lessons from last year and be more efficient at getting that done this year.
Well, I appreciate that and that clarification that folks don't think that we're making this change and that's not a, not a piece of the question, not that I question that, but glad to hear that. My secondary question real quick, Mayor, is, and you've already alluded to it earlier today, but you know, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, some budget-type things and we're making some changes here. And so one concern that a council member has when he sees this is, okay, I see a reduction in some of these fees, you know, how do we know this is going to pay for what we're, you know, what we're looking to try to do and what we're, we're trying to change? And I know you alluded to that, and I just want to give you that opportunity to, to speak to that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, council member. So we are tracking the staff time that is charged to these. So looking back at our data from last year, it was a little murky in full disclosure because the work was being performed by our utility staff. Beginning of the year, that work got transferred over to our engineering staff. We just set up some more codes to be able to better track the time that was spent on those. So the best that we could and the, from the data we had and the fees collected and the staff time charge, we are comfortable with the fees that we have right now. As I mentioned at the study session, we will review these at the end of the year to make sure that we're getting full cost recovery. So, you know, if our fees are not in line with the costs that we're incurring, we will adjust them or vice versa too. So, and I told that and I shared that with some of the providers who had some concerns because as I mentioned, the fee for 25, 60, you know, for a half mile of, of installation will be going up for underground based on the new fees that are proposed here today. So we made a commitment that we would review those at the end of the year, and if we need to make adjustments to make sure that we're at that full cost recovery, we'll do that. But as, as of this point, staff is comfortable with the fees provided before you this evening that will be able to receive, recover full costs for staff time that's dedicated to that work.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does the, does the, either the restoration requirements or the stop work requirements due to inclement weather requirements provide for those, those companies going back and like cleaning up the area? So we had a big, we had a big situation where flags were left in, for months and months and months at a time, and, and now they're in our storm drains and other things like that because it got crazy, right? Is that part of the restoration expectation is that they're cleaning up those things and are, and, and if so, does that include that if they've not finished work in an area by the time it has to be stopped due to weather, they're going to go in and they're going to clean that up and they're going to redo it next year?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. That's a great question. So I should clarify, the, the work moratorium is related to the penetration or excavation of the hard surface. So if conditions allow, we will still allow them to go in and do soft surface restoration, you know, later than that, earlier than that. I know that we have some crews out there right now that are itching. I got an email that they were able to get some soils, they're hoping to get out there and do some soft surface restoration, even though the spring load restrictions are still in place right now to kind of get ahead of that. But there is a two-year warranty period. So we are tracking, we actually had our crews, our field crews go out and document all of the handholds that have sunk over the winter. So we have a whole list of them that we were sending to the contractors saying, you installed these last year, you did soft surface restoration, they have settled, you need to go back and, and fix these things. So they are under warranty for two years, so we do track those. The same thing with the hard surface as well. If there's a sinking during the winter, we'll require them, we have called into some of the, the contractors to have them come back and cold patch, temporarily patch that because we've had core holes that sunk during the winter and we're kind of getting, you know, depressions there. So they've temporarily filled those with cold patch and now have to go back out here in the spring when material's available once again and do that full restoration of those. So yes, we are tracking those.
If I may just follow up. So, so would you accept calls from, from individuals on that as well? So, hey, I've had these flags in my yard for two months, nobody's working on it, can somebody please come get these flags? Like, would you take those calls as well?
Absolutely. So we'll take any calls. We encourage them to contact the contractor directly, but if they're not getting service or they're not seeing action from them, we can escalate that. So absolutely, we encourage the first call to be, put them in contact with the contractor. And we've told the contractor that they need to have, there's numbers on our website and we actually check those to make sure that they are answered, they're not just going to some machine. And they need to be responsive on those. And if we don't get that response on this, we can take action and/or, you know, put a pause, a stop work order on them if need be. So I meet with all of the providers on a weekly basis and have those conversations so able to escalate those situations as needed. So happy to do so.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Additional questions, council? If not, thank you. Don't go away, we're going to go to a public hearing now. With that, council, I'm going to open the public hearing on item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding the right-of-way permitting and management ordinance amendments. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to open, wishing to speak to item 4.1 tonight during the public hearing? Anyone in the chambers? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak, Caitlin?
Mayor, there's no one online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Council, nobody in the chambers coming forward to speak to item 4.1? No one on the phone wishing to speak? I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. I will say, council, this is based on our conversation back in February at the study session on this, this does, what we had talked about, trying to make sure that we, you know, align our, our code with standard construction practices, streamline things, and then also put a little bit of muscle behind making sure that they come back and clean up after themselves and do a little better job of leaving the work, their work in the way that it was before they arrived. So I, I think hats off to you, Mr. Hanson, for this. I think it's, it's a good movement, movement forward. I think it's a good combination of improvements to the code. And I think it's a kind of a no-brainer that we move forward on this. So any other council comments on it? If not, I would look for action. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could, I just want to say, this is an example of what we've been doing to streamline services for residents and contractors and people who want to do business in Bloomington. We've been doing this for a long time. And so this is just a visible example of what this actually comes out to. So appreciate the work that went into this. With that, I would move to adopt an ordinance updating the right-of-way permitting and management requirements, thereby amending chapter 17 and appendix A of the city code.
Motion by, motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to update the right-of-way permitting and management requirements, chapter 17 and appendix A of the city code. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending chapter 17 and appendix A of the city code related to the right-of-way permitting and management requirements.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro for summary publication on item 4.1. No further council discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you much, Mr. Hanson. Moving on, item 4.2, our second public hearing of the evening. This regarding a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning for Rainbow Midwest at 980th Street. Dakota Castaneda is here with us this evening. Good evening, sir, welcome.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council. I think are the slides up, but while these slides are coming up, the council's asked to take action on two requests tonight. The first being a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the property at 900 West 80th Street from industrial to community commercial. And then the second request is to rezone the property from I-3 general industry to B-2 general commercial. Let's see if I got. And then, these were just some images we can always go back to if it's helpful, but really just wanted to start with the why, why a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. The short answer is that the applicant wants to operate a use that's not currently permitted in the I-3 zoning district. And I guess the longer, more formal answer is that the, they have a showroom, they sell kind of slide swing set, kind of backyard play equipment, and they want to use that showroom for private birthday parties and private play sessions. And staff have interpreted that as a distinct use from retail and as an indoor recreation and entertainment use that's not currently permitted in the I-3 zoning district. And so as staff, our role is to really just ensure compliance with the zoning code. And so the, the applicant kind of has a number of options available to them. One could be to stop the use at the current location, they could relocate to a new location where the use is permitted, they could rezone to a zoning district that allows the use, or they could amend the zoning code to permit the use in that underlying zoning district. Talking with the applicant, you know, if they've been at their location for a long time and want to stay there, kind of rules out the first two options. And then working with the applicant and staff, we kind of directed them to do the rezoning process to focus specifically on their site versus having a broader policy discussion around non-industrial uses in a, in an entire industrial zoning district. And so that's where you see the, the applications for you tonight. Just some additional background that was highlighted in the staff report. The fire prevention staff became aware of this use kind of back in September of 2024. And we're working with the applicant just around some fire code and life safety concerns with using the showroom as an indoor play area, kind of changes the occupancy class of the space from a retail use to an assembly use, and that entails different requirements. And as part of that process, they have also connected with us in the planning division and the environmental health division. And again, kind of through that research, kind of made this determination that it would be considered indoor recreation, entertainment that's not currently allowed. The site also had a conditional use permit granted back in 1998 that allowed for the showroom and retail sale of the outdoor play equipment. But as part of those conditions, it was really meant for the retail component and not for kind of recreational uses. So staff in a number of divisions are continuing to work with the applicant towards compliance. The, the item tonight is really around the zoning compliance piece. And if, if adopted or kind of approved for this rezoning, the next step is really for the applicant to submit a building permit, continue to work with our building and inspection staff and fire prevention staff to ensure that their use is meeting all building and life safety codes and requirements. This was the floor plan that was shared with us, again, just kind of showing you the showroom, different types of equipment that they have set up, and this is the space that they would like to use kind of for indoor play sessions. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things on the comprehensive plan amendment. There aren't specific findings in our city code like there is on a site plan or a conditional use permit. But kind of in general, we think about, does it align with the comprehensive plan? And how does the existing and proposed use of the land interact with that site and kind of the surrounding areas? I just put the pyramid of discretion kind of in the corner as a reminder that the planning commission and city council, you all have a lot of discretion in a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment case versus maybe a, a site plan or a conditional use permit where you're simply kind of applying our code and making sure it meets that. Here, you're kind of in a broader policy setting around rezoning. So with the comprehensive plan amendment, just some considerations that staff wanted to highlight that we think is in support of the comprehensive plan amendment. This property is identified as a transitional industry area in our comprehensive plan, and that allows for reguidings and rezonings on a case-by-case basis. Kind of direct uses right around the property are a mix of commercial, industrial, and kind of office and hotel uses. And then the broader American Boulevard corridor is also a variety of, of uses that, in this case, staff didn't feel as strongly that this was some kind of like spot zoning or something. The American Boulevard corridor is pretty mixed in terms of uses and zoning districts. As was mentioned, the indoor recreation uses are currently permitted in commercial zones. And so kind of going to a community commercial guiding just puts that in more alignment with the use that they would like to do. And then we have two strategies there from the comp plan in support of the amendment. Just quickly on the, oh, sorry, I forgot I had this on here. This is just a map from the comprehensive plan. Again, shows where we have protected industrial areas where that was kind of guidance from the council on where we wanted to preserve more industrial uses as well as these transitional areas where we could see non-industrial uses. And then the really small yellow square off to the right is this property, again, in that transitional area. For rezoning, just some things to consider that, again, staff felt like we're in support of the rezoning. Their current showroom and retail sales were granted by that conditional use permit and actually aren't currently allowed in I-3, so it's a legally non-conforming use. Rezoning this property to B-2 would put all of the uses of their property as permitted and legally conforming uses, which I thought is a benefit for the business and kind of thinking about greater flexibility in the future for them. Again, like I've mentioned a couple of times, it's in that transition, transitional industry area to support rezoning. And then if the council is supportive of going to community commercial, we also want to ensure that that underlying zoning aligns with that. And so that was where kind of B-2 is that commercial zoning district to align with community commercial. I also just wanted to highlight, we did look at some other zoning districts that maybe they could rezone to, including the TI zoning district and the B-4 zoning district. And the reason we did that was this property was a part of the study area of the Lyndale Avenue suburban retrofit plan. However, once we looked at some of the, the details more in those zoning districts, the TI zoning district requires direct access to Lyndale Ave, which this property currently does not. And then we've guided the B-4 zoning districts to more of our priority designated nodes along 86th and Lyndale and 98th and Lyndale. So those are those areas kind of outlined in red. And so again, this property isn't directly in those, those nodes. And so staff felt B-2 was an appropriate zoning district. I also just wanted to highlight a couple of things in the staff report. We don't traditionally condition a rezoning application like we would on a site plan or a conditional use permit. So as part of this process, there were some things that staff became aware of that we would just want to address again to kind of further that zoning code compliance issue. And that relates to the parking area on the east side of their property. They've had some outdoor storage, which isn't currently allowed as a condition of that CUP. And then to ensure that there's the appropriate amount of minimum parking for the indoor recreation use, we want to ensure that they restripe their east parking lot to the original site plan as shown on the screen to ensure that they meet that, that parking minimum. They currently have restriped that and there's less stalls on that, that east parking lot. So again, these are things that we would continue as staff, kind of regardless of the decision tonight to work with the applicant on. This was considered at a planning commission meeting on February 13th, and the planning commission did recommend approval of both items on a six zero vote. And then I have the motions here. One is for the complaint amendment, one is for the rezoning, and then the third is for the author, authorizing summary publication. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I believe we have representatives of the application here as well to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Castaneda. Council, any questions? Councilmember Lohman.
Just really one question. I appreciate the answers, you know, to the safety concerns about the, the site. But more of my questions that I wanted to focus in on today is just with the staff's kind of position around, you know, you know, industrial zoning and, you know, in terms of what that, you know, I, I saw some type of study that, you know, if you use industrial zoning, you, you bring in a certain amount of revenue that's a lot higher than, you know, this, this, this type of retail, you know, type, type work. And I understand that there's no way to kind of keep it the way it is and then jerry-rig it so you could make it work with, with, with that, with that use. So I'm just curious about that in terms of backfilling or what does that look like with the rest of the, rest of the city as we kind of gobble up these, these, these things that are hard to replace because I know that a lot of residential folks don't want this stuff next to them.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, um, Mayor, Councilmember Loman. I I think as staff, we kind of rely on that um, the map or kind of the industrial obsolescence. Study that was part of the comprehensive plan. Back during that process. So you know, we kind of look at, we do get a lot of inquiries on some of our older industrial areas. On non-industrial uses and we kind of use um, this guidance when working with applicants. That if it's in an area that was identified as a potential to transition um, to a a non-industrial use. That's kind of where we direct applicants towards. And then of course, um, they would have to go through this this process and that consideration from planning commission and city council. So yeah, I guess I don't have a ton of specifics on on some of that. But we do get a lot of inquiries about it and we kind of guide it to some of these older areas that don't really meet kind of standard industrial. Specs in in spaces. Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification. I'll have comments later, Mayor, when we get to the comment period.
Very good. Any additional questions? Councilmember Mua and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to confirm that switching over to B two. Doesn't impact any current operations, official operations? They would continue to just operate the way they are?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Mua, uh, that is correct. So yeah, rezoning to um, B two. Would still allow for um, their kind of storage and in warehouse part of their business. It would still allow for the showroom and then allow for the indoor and recreation use.
And then does this remove the C U P that's currently?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Mua. I have to, that's a good question. I think if it becomes permitted, then. I don't believe the C U P would be required, but we certainly would still look at some of those conditions. Or is a lot of those conditions are part of um, the zoning code now anyway, just to ensure the compliance with that. But I guess that's a good question. I don't know if uh, City Attorney here might have any thoughts on that.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to follow up on the B two to B four discussion that you had. So when I looked at the comprehensive plan, I know that we have, we have language in the comp plan about neighborhood and commercial. Community commercial areas and then we have the I four ninety four corridor discussions and they're not really in conflict with each other. But they 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 have distinct leanings, if you will. But there are some like, you know, this idea of of reinvesting in aging neighborhood, commercial areas to improve market viability and aesthetics. And then it, there's another one. It says encourage high density residential development within the corridor near services, amenities, employment and transit. And and that's in the I four ninety four quarter. So I'm I'm wondering if there's a. Outside of the, hey, this was specifically designed for the eighty sixth and ninety eighth street, Lyndale Avenue retrofit. Although we use it at ninetieth and Penn as well, right? It feels like the B four, it could give them the same benefit, but also help us with a a forward plan. For um, for what that could be, given the fact that it sits on both a a high traffic area. Where we want to encourage public transit, bicycling, you know, it's now going to be across the street from a a a. Plus fifty five plus community, et cetera. And and in addition to that, which which falls into that I four ninety four corridor idea for a comp plan. And then this neighborhood and commercial, you know, community commercial area, which in ten, I mean. It encourages more residential uses in and adjacent to redeveloping older commercial nodes. I mean, I have friends who go here. I'm not, I'm trying not to turn this into a comment. My question is, I'll I'll make some comments in a minute. I have tons of friends who go there, love what y'all do. Trust me, the 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 folks at Rainbow make a good party apparently. So that's really great. I want to encourage that and I want people to be able to walk there if they have a party coming up. I want people to be able to take public transportation to get there. So my question would be, like, i- is there any downside to just doing the B four versus the B two? If we can also get kind of kind of forward thinking in terms of that area. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro. Yeah, that was considered as part of kind of staff discussions and and truthfully looking at a lot of the um. Performance standards around lot size and those things, the B two and B four really isn't that different. So I um, I think ultimately the main, the main difference being B four would allow residential. Um, versus B two doesn't currently allow residential. And I I guess where we kind of landed on on B two again is I think there were some language kind of pertaining to Lyndale Ave in in the B four. District and and just kind of making an assumption that. By allowing the indoor recreation use, they're probably going to be there for a long time and wouldn't see residential on this particular site for a while anyway. So that was kind of the decision, but I guess all of that to say, I don't think there's an an issue if you wanted to go before. Versus B two, there isn't necessarily a a detriment, I guess, to that. Yeah.
Okay, so so materially, it doesn't change the plans for the the applicant?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Council, additional questions? Alright, don't go away. Uh, the applicants, anything to to add to the presentation tonight? Please.
Thank you, Mayor Bressi and uh, council members. I will say that I, last time I was in front of a microphone was sixteen days ago for a eulogy. And I went twenty eight minutes too long. So in order of time, I'll try to keep it short and brief. It's been five o'clock the entire time here, guys. But yes, so the way Rainbow Midwest has operated.
If you could, if you could identify yourself.
Oh, yes, I apologize. I'm John Meyer. I work on behalf of Rainbow.
Thank you.
For the last twenty six and a half years, uh, we've been at our current location on nine hundred West Eightieth Street. We have operated since October of ninety eight to actually have uh, birthday parties. It wasn't until recently in September of twenty twenty four that the fire department decided that we were in violation being in I three. So unfortunately for us, the idea of working with Dakota and the rest of the city planning department has been nothing more than. Just trying to let us validate our business. So hopefully we get to operate the exact same way for the next twenty six and a half years. You brought up a question, uh, Councilmember Loman, as far as going from industrial to general commercial. The only thing that would do is it'd actually reduce our viability for business. But not having uh, birthday parties or pay for play options is really to help really between November and April of every calendar year. Being a seasonal recreational equipment facility, we're just not able to operate year round without those. Without those options out there. So obviously, when the city has built beautiful parks, has invested a ton of money. Unfortunately, the worst time to use city parks is between November and end of March, to be honest, as you can see. So we're just making sure that we give parents and children options to play. And obviously, in return, we hope that they love our equipment and eventually buy something from us. So in order of only screwing this up, the more I speak. We just obviously like to maintain our business operations the way we have. The few items that we do need to clearing up, we've already taken care of. We've hit all the coding compliance things from the fire department. We've removed the structures at our door that have been outdoor, which has been a playground equipment. Unfortunately, the homeless people have found a nice facility to sleep in at night. And then we are going to restripe to add the two additional spots to bring us up from fifty six to fifty eight. So we've hit every requirement out there and we just want to continue to operate as our form of business. I open up to any questions.
Thank you much. Any questions? Councilmember Loman, a question.
Uh, just a question about that my colleague had asked about the B two to B four. Do you, I'm assuming there's no no issue at all?
There really is now. Uh, the only uh, why we are really looking, uh, which would have saved us money was going from I three to T I. But we are unfortunately five hundred feet away from Lyndale Avenue itself. So just being that. Uh, we had to reapply for the rezoning. So B two to B four, it still allows us to operate in our current business the way it is today.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Other questions? Alright.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Don't go far. Ms. Manderscheid.
Uh, Mayor and members, uh, so what I heard um, during the communication was or during the presentation was that staff publicly noticed a B two. Zoning classification. And I hear some council discussion about a B four um, at uh, instead potentially. And I think we should talk a little bit more about that um, to make sure that we have sufficient due process and notice with regard to that. If there's a desire to shift um, to to something else, I think we should talk about that a little bit.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. So what you're saying is we had a public hearing notice for a B two rezoning. If we go to a B four rezoning, then we're going to have to renotice and probably do this whole operation over again. And if uh, if it's a.
I like your, I like your thought process.
If it's a horse apiece on uh, on B two versus B four, with the possible exception of some, you know, future uh, expansion or or changes. It might be worth it to stick to the B two. Or I mean, if we feel strongly about it, we can change it to the B four. But then, as I said, we'll have to renotice and and have another public hearing. So Councilmember DeLisandro.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we have to go through that process or anything. I, my, my, my. My curiosity was just um, where where we can, if we can make the decision to be more open to that. Especially along four ninety four corridors and and major commercial nodes. In this particular case, if I I completely agree with the assessment that this this particular organization will be there for the next thirty years. And you know, there's not going to be a chance to, you know, you can't never say never. But if it's B two versus B four, and the the right answer is leave it that way to get the business done, I I don't have any objection to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
And we are now going to open our public hearing. This is a public hearing on item four point two this evening. This is a public hearing regarding a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for Rainbow Midwest. At nine hundred West Eightieth Street. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item four point two this evening? Seeing no one coming forward. Do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor, there is no one online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers. Council, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point two.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua to close the public hearing. Councilmember.
I just have one more question before we close it that I just thought of. For the applicant, can I ask it after we close?
We can, we, yes, you. You're not officially part of the public. You're part of the uh, decision making body. So yes, you can certainly ask the questions once we.
I got downgraded.
Yep. We are, we are simply closing the public hearing and then we can continue the council discussion on this. So we have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any more questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, closing the public hearing on item four point two. Councilmember Nelson, a question.
Yeah, um, I heard a comment from the applicant that not doing T I and going with B two costs them more money. Can you explain why?
It's just the application fee. That was it.
There's a difference in price on the application fees?
Uh, I think we had to do both the comp plan in addition to the rezoning. That was it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's perfect. Yesterday, anything to add there?
Nope, that that was it. Going to, this required the com- comp plan amendment and the rezoning. T I would have just been a rezoning.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. And then I would, if we could get an answer to the C U P. If it goes away or what happens to it.
Ms. Manderscheid, uh, any initial thoughts on that?
Mayor, excuse me. Excuse me. Uh, typically, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor and members, C U P's run of the land. We were just chatting here with the Assistant City Attorney, uh, who worked on this matter to talk about the conditions that attach uh, to the C U P. In I two relative to B two, or was it I two? Excuse me, I three to B two and to see if we need to do any cleanup um, on that. So if we do, we'll bring that back out and otherwise tidy it up.
Okay, with that, Councilmember. Alright, Councilmember Loman and Councilmember, no, Councilmember Loman.
I just had a couple of comments on this, you know, I mean, we're around, been around long enough to seen when this building was uh. You know, when it was put together and um, uh, over there. So um, and I think, you know, my my comments are not. Were not really directed in terms of your business and in terms of how you're operating that. I apologize. I I should be addressing you, Mayor. So excuse me for that. Um, but uh, uh, really more my concern is around uh, you know, what we're looking for in terms of a plan. You know, with that general, general area, Mayor, that when we, when we kind of make these changes and, you know, we've got this comp plan that's already out there. And we've got the zoning that's already there, you know, that we can try to be just more more planful as much as we can. And certainly this is great that we're being flexible with the businesses that are there. Uh, I think it makes good sense to uh, to support this. And I and I and I do support this, um, and I will support this. Uh, this makes a lot of sense. And typically, I don't support uh, these things that, you know, have to do with young folks uh, that are in in an industrial zone. Because I've always felt that that's dangerous, but you know, this really is different. You know, this is really on the edge. It's it's right there, you know, um, uh. You know, on that on that main thoroughfare there. It fits into the into the entire area and it just makes a lot of sense. It's not really connected to the any of the other buildings that are there. And uh, you know, it just, I think it just makes sense to move forward with this. And so with that in mind, I will be uh, supporting this uh, a- as is.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
I had an idea for a thought, for a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm wondering if we got any, it doesn't look like it per the packet. But did we get any feedback from any of the neighbors when we did our notice about um, whether whether or not there was any challenges? Or in, for that matter, did we get supportive statements?
Mr. Castaneda, any public feedback on this?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, um, the only correspondence we had was to the Planning Commission Public Hearing. From Robert Coleman, and that was the only correspondence I've received since then.
So no, none of the businesses responded or anything? That's usually a good sign. No news is good news in that regard. Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. Um, I have been to this playground. For the last two years, no less than probably thirty times. Because I'm just in that age group where um, this is a hugely valuable resource to the community. And they have shown that they have been nothing but good neighbors, um, good representatives of the community. And so I want Rainbow Play Systems to continue to be successful, to continue to provide a service. And I would have no less than three hundred families really upset at me um, if we didn't do this. And so they have shown that they are willing to continue to support us, want to be here, the community. And so um, the least we could do is make sure that they can continue to operate.
A rousing endorsement, Councilmember. Any other count, uh, comments, Council? Hearing none. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with that, I would move to adopt a resolution approving a comprehensive plan amendment. To reguide the property at nine hundred West Eightieth Street from industrial to community commercial.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to approve a comprehensive plan amendment, regiding the property at nine hundred West Eightieth Street. From industrial to community commercial. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Mua.
I would move um, to adopt an ordinance amending the zoning district map to rezone the property at nine hundred West Eightieth Street. From I three general industry to B two general commercial.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to amend the zoning district map, rezoning property at nine hundred West Eightieth Street. From I three general industry to B two general commercial. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Mua.
And I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending the zoning district map. To rezone the property at nine hundred West Eightieth Street from I three general industry to B two general commercial.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adopt an ordinance amending the zoning district map, rezoning the property at nine hundred West Eightieth Street. From I three general industry to B two general commercial. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Congratulations and thank you much for, I mean, your your Bloomington success story. Twenty six years, twenty nine years, however long, doing this kind of thing. And uh, I mean, everybody knows Rainbow Play Systems. Everybody does. And so congratulations. And Councilmember Mua, we'll see you soon. And uh, uh, thank you very much. Good to see you all tonight. Thanks. With that, Council, we're going to move on to item five on our agenda, our organizational business. And we're going to start with item five point one. A public safety update with our Police Chief Booker T. Hodges. Chief Hodges, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Uh, do I get to control this thing over here or how's that work? Alright. I need a visual. If I can't see, we're gonna have some problems over here. Um, sorry, I'm just coming from another. Meeting, yeah. Alright. Alright, uh, so I'm going to give our uh, public safety update here. Obviously, our mission at the Bloomington Police Department is I'll be, always be respectful while we're keeping our community safe. And uh, we strive every day to do that. This next thing you're going to look at here, and I'm just, I'm not going to try to be too academic. When I talk about us being the best police department um, in the country, one of the things that uh, we got from the council of mayors. Was a grant to um, do this study about how aligned we were as a department. With our community in terms of our core values. The line for our police department is the blue graph you're looking at there. And the rest of the police departments in the country are purple. Now, alignment is considered ninety percent or above. Most surveys are done at the sixty percent mark. But this survey particularly is ninety percent or above. It's kind of like the Minnesota theme, like row, row, row your boat. If you're rowing a boat and you don't have total alignment, that boat's not going to row the way it needs to roll. So uh, one of the things here that you can see, obviously, we've scored higher. And this was only six months into our uh, core values based project. Some of the things, you know, the mission piece, which is the far arrow and the employee empowerment piece, which is um. Outside of the normal law enforcement organization, meaning that our organization in this city is in alignment with empowering our officers and our employees. If you were to take this down to the seventy percent mark, that line would be way further out. But uh, doing a ninety percent mark is a uh, very high standard of communication, which is the one at the top. You can also see that um, we far exceed everybody else in communication and we defeated the model in terms of development. And that's one of the things that we do really good here at the city. And while we're able to operate as a police department, is providing training and development opportunities for our staff. This survey was completed. And while we're able to operate as a police department, is providing training and development opportunities for our staff. Uh, this survey was completed by a hundred percent of our staff. Not just, uh, police officers, it was our civilian staff. It's the only survey that they'd done where they had a census of the officers that completed it. And that also should be an indication of if people feel comfortable enough to complete a survey such as this, um, that what, how important that is. Now, what does this mean? Uh, one of the things when we got this grant, we wanted to look at was, was there something here that could be replicated nationally in terms of improving, improving community trust with shared values? And I think when you look at, uh, what we've been able to do here after six months of implementing this, uh, what we'll submit to the Council of Mayors is that, if a community engages in a shared values project and is true shared values with their community, uh, the department can get in alignment with the community and start to rebuild or reestablish trust or maintain or improve trust like we have here. And also where our officers are in alignment with that and the mission vision value statement is not something that's just written on the wall, it's something that everybody believes in. And I'll take questions at the end if you want, or you can interrupt me anytime you like. Uh, so our staffing here, uh, by your grace, uh, we are currently six over for police officers. But, um, I'm still a little concerned with that, um, because right now, if you look at the retirement eligibility piece here, we have four officers that can go this year and five that can go next year for a total of nine. So that would leave us three short. It takes eighteen months before someone is fully up and ready to go. We have been very fortunate here through our cadet program where we've been able to hire police officers that are reflective of this community. Um, and I want to continue to do that. Um, so we're going to try to make some adjustments here so we can continue to be, um, float a little over so we don't fall behind. Because once you fall behind, you're, you're looking at eighteen months before you can catch up. One of the things when we did our initial, uh, retirement projections was most people would leave at fifty-three. Um, the culture here has shifted a little bit, and so some of these folks are staying to fifty-five. So that's why you got both numbers on here for fifty-three and fifty-five. Now, if they change some of the pension stuff that they're talking about, the capital now, uh, I would fully expect, um, the fifty-three number to be accurate. So if they lower some of the penalties or if they, instituted this drop program, um, the drop program that they're talking about does not benefit us here in Bloomington because of we have adequate staffing. The drop program essentially says if you retire today, uh, you can retire and then come back to work and still get a salary. So it's like double dipping, right? So the state employees are allowed to do that with the Minnesota State Patrol, B C A and Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement. The theory behind it is you would get to keep, retain more employees so people don't leave and you don't hit the staffing shortages. But here in Bloomington, quite, that just would not benefit us because, uh, we have a hundred percent retention rate and we're overstaffed. So that's why I put both those numbers in there. So if you see that, that's the combination, and I don't think it's going to pass because, um, money, right now, the capital. Uh, next up, uh, our civilian staff members here. And then next, uh, crime has been down eight percent over the last three years, and the mayor went in a car kaoki, so I figured I'd make, uh, highlight him in that. Uh, but, uh, crime going down again, um, I say this all the time, it doesn't matter as police chief, if I tell you crime is down, if your house just got broken into, or the other day, this weekend, this is the second weekend in a row where we've had significant car break-ins on the east side, uh, over specifically by Great Wolf. Uh, we caught the first group. Uh, now we're working on catching the second group that did the damage this weekend. So I don't, we don't know what's going on over there. So again, crime is down, but, you know, again, if, if something happens to you, you don't care if people are saying crime is down or not. All right, fiscal considerations. I know we're going into budget, and I just wanted the public to look at just the general increases that we've been having, um, in terms of just salary without benefits, uh, the squad car piece, and how much squads are going up, um, and with these tariffs and whatnot, uh, we fully expect some of these prices to continue to, to rise. And then just our uniforms. It might not seem like a huge increase in uniforms, but when we do that on average times three or four, uh, police officers times a hundred and thirty-six, you can quickly see how fast that can go up. And some of these tariffs, uh, will affect, um, some uniforms. I mean, they switched to a few years ago where you had to buy uniforms made in America. So the uniform piece, I think, is a little stable. It's the vehicle piece that we're going to have to look at moving forward to as a city. Next, uh, Bloomington Community Brain Health Services Program. Again, uh, no one else is doing this. Uh, we provide free immediate therapeutic services for those in crisis. Uh, this program has far exceeded what I thought we would do. Uh, so, so far throughout February, we've seen seventy-four individuals and couples, uh, four hundred and seventy-seven psychotherapy sessions completed. We've also started to do our diversion program, working with, uh, the city attorney and some of our partners, where you get to one who has a drug charge as opposed to charging them, start to get them in treatment, hold that over their head so they can start to work through some of their, some of their issues. Um, so we'll see how that goes. I, I think it'd be successful. Some of the comments from folks, very good program, free, free service, was a wonderful tool, excellent, life-changing. We did have one person who quit the program and said therapy is not for them, um, which is, which is fine. We're not going to force people to do it, but we provide this service free to anyone. And as of last week, um, I was just told we've exceeded our capacity here. So we're going to have to look at some of those things. But again, we provide eight free therapy sessions to folks. Um, it doesn't matter your income level, we don't ask all that. So we're, we built this airplane as we, we're flying it, so, uh, it's still flying. So I guess that's the good part. Uh, so some of our community stuff, uh, we got our open house here on the seventeenth, uh, reading time in libraries, cops and cones, um, camp hero, senior safety academy. A lot of these things on here are stuff that, uh, communities asked for. Like the Senior Safety Academy is one that I'm really excited about, um, to really teach our seniors. If we can just get our seniors to stop answering their landlines, uh, we could prevent a lot of, a lot of fraudulent activity that takes place there. Your grand, for those of your seniors who are watching, your grandkids, your kids are not going to call you from jail needing money and needing you to get a credit card or, um, a prepaid card to go give to them. It's not going to happen. And no one, the bank is not going to call you asking you for your bank account number over the phone. Um, and I know for some of us who are a little bit younger, uh, we look at that and we kind of chuckle a little bit, but when you actually go out and talk to these folks, I think, at least for me anyway, we don't realize what it'd be like to sit in a place all by yourself all day, every day, and these people are the only ones that are calling you or reaching out to you. So that's, uh, so hopefully, uh, we'll just be successful. At least the folks will get out for a day and get to meet some other folks. Bowling, Holiday Helpers in Blue, uh, Faith in Blue, Thanksgiving and Cops Coach and Youth Sports. This has been really big for us. Um, a lot of sports activities in Bloomington are Cops Coach. And then at the end of the season, they're finding out that they're police officers. So that really works out really well. Recent awards, we've got our regional leaders for our brain health program. Uh, we just got, and this is a very tough award to get, especially for a law enforcement agency, uh, the Minnesota Ethical Leadership Award for our shared values program. And then, uh, we just got an award again, which is tough to get from the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association, uh, for our brain health program. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. Council questions of the chief. Uh, Councilmember Mua and then Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks for being here, Chief. Uh, I think one of the first questions I ever asked you when we first met was how do we get more public involved in public safety? And I'm really happy to see all of the events that our officers are doing in the community. But I do continue to have concerns because public safety continues to change. So I would like to understand from you, um, what are kind of the, the concerns you have for our community in the next three to five years that we as a council should be thinking about and planning for?
So we got, um, extensive input in our police department. So the MAC, obviously, they help us a lot with the policy, our neighborhood watch group. And if anybody up here can come up with a different name for that, please let me know. Uh, I've been trying to brainstorm to change that, but there's multiple avenues for people to have input in the police department, and they do. But for me, for the next, um, three to five years, uh, first is going to be human trafficking. As a profession, we're just getting our hats handed to us and that. Um, and, you know, every time we do these details, even with the publicity of them, we should not be catching this many folks. And we should not be catching this many folks who are habitual consumers of that type of services. So that, that's going to be first and foremost. Uh, the next thing we're going to have to look at is, um, political violence. Um, unfortunately, we're starting to see that around the country and you're starting to see it, you know, even pop up here in Minnesota. We're, we're going to have to really, um, watch out for that. Auto theft and those things are currently are down, uh, assaults and murders and all that stuff is currently down, the violent crime aspect of it. But those are the two things that I would look for to, for the next three to five years. All that can change if something happens, but right now, that's kind of what we're planning for.
Councilmember Lowman and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I'll start with this one first. So, uh, you know, you showed a slide, you know, with, you know, some of your budget concerns, uh, on there, or just, you know, the increases in that. And I'm just curious, as a policymaker, what would you advise for us to, you know, make a bigger investment today because of those, those tariffs may get, you know, larger later? Or, you know, is there something else you want to, you know, kind of, want to give you the opportunity to kind of tell me as we're looking at the budget, you know, what, what you want to see?
You guys have the election certificates, so I'll let you make that, make that determination.
You're the special, right?
That's how I'm going to answer that question.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, I'll put you, I'll put you on the spot again. I, I like to do that for you. All right. So we, we, I saw the other slide, we, you know, a, a great picture of our mayor, you know, with eight percent down. But what do we mean eight percent down? Eight percent down violent crime? Where were we at before? How do we compare to, to other, other cities? Where, where does the eight percent, can you help me?
Yeah, I can get you the numbers, but violent crime is down. Overall, the, the eight percent number is overall crime is down in Bloomington by eight percent. Uh, violent crime is down, uh, since two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the only number we've seen a slight uptick this last year was in our aggravated assaults, but everything else is down in the city right now. So.
And then we can, when we compare that to other cities, you know, are we better than them? Or, you know, how, how does, how, how do we compare?
I'd have to look. I don't want to throw anybody.
Okay, yeah, I know you want to throw, well, I, I got thrown under the bus at some other event I was at. I'm more than willing to throw folks. Okay, well, that's good to know. I mean, I, I think the thing I like about, about that idea that we're, you know, the, the things that you have mentioned and brought forward, uh, is an example and a testament, uh, to this city's, uh, focus around, and, and, and also, Mayor, your, your priorities around this idea of investing in, uh, you know, public safety. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't think we'd see these numbers like this unless we had this type of investment. And I hope, you know, to my first question that I asked, that, you know, that we're continuing to think about that as we kind of move forward and as we look at, you know, what we're going to, we're going to charge folks. So then my, my last question that I kind of have, and I've had this now, you know, at the Optimist Club, had a couple of emails, had a phone call, uh, uh, earlier this week, in terms of what is, uh, our city's, uh, position around, you know, uh, doing things, uh, that, that are being handled, that should be maybe handled at a different level, you know, the federal level and the state level. What is our, our police department's, uh, position around, around that?
Yeah, that, that's, um, so our position, you know, we put a social media video out there on what we do. First and foremost, um, ICE has not asked us to do anything. Let's just start there, right? I mean, one of the things when people are saying they're not cooperating with ICE, no one else, or Immigration and Customs Enforcement, no one takes the time to ask them, what does that mean? What does that look like when you're not cooperating with them? Right? So the only thing that they've asked for thus far is for sheriff's offices with bed space for jails. So in terms of that, we still don't, we don't have the authority to enforce Title Eight law, which is immigration law. Now, one thing I will say that's different this time around than when this first started back in two thousand sixteen is when the president decided that, um, he was going to use the, uh, whole of government. And I don't think people fully understand what that means. That means the use of all federal agencies are going to, um, this is their priority. So what does that mean? If we arrest somebody and fingerprint them, right, which is what you do when someone gets arrested. Previously, we would have to report that to immigration officials if they came back as someone who was not in this country. That is no longer the case. They are calling you because they are notified when a fingerprint is run. So, and I'm just going on the publicly available stuff, IRS, Department of, um, Health and Human Services, uh, HUD, the marine, I just got back from the border and you got U S Marines on the border putting up Constantine wire. The whole of government, the federal government has been directed toward this issue. So for the average citizen, if we stop someone on a traffic stop, we're not asking for anybody's immigration status. That's not our job to do that. It'd be the same as, you know, if the FAA came to us, Federal Aviation Administration came to us and said, there's a pilot over here that flew this plane without a license. We're not going to send the police over there to get them because that is a federal law. We are not authorized, nor are we deputized to enforce federal law. But the thing I want to be clear on, if someone is in this country and we arrest them because they've broken the law, ICE will get notified because they are fingerprinted.
You know, I think, I appreciate you, uh, clarifying that because I, I didn't know all, all that. It sounds pretty consistently with what, what I said and, uh, but I, I appreciate that distinction in terms of, of, of what we're doing, that we're following the, we're following the laws. So, thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Chief.
How you doing?
Good. I'm ready for karaoke whenever you are.
All right.
Thank you, uh, in advance for asking about the Neighborhood Watch renaming program. I've been thinking about that for a long time, so I'm looking forward to working with you on that. I'm, I stay concerned about, I don't know if it's been up or down, or it's been pretty consistent, but I feel like we have a higher than I would like to see incident rate of domestic violence in this city. Um, that's probably true in Minnesota, too. I would imagine we're not outliers per se. But since you didn't mention it explicitly around, when you mentioned human trafficking and political violence, I'm curious about your thoughts on the efforts we've made over the last couple of years, um, around, um, working with, um, our, our, you know, our programs that are here in, in the city as well as the, the work from the county. In what direction do you think that's going? And, and, in, in what way is there more work for us to do?
Yeah, and I, I didn't mention it because they gave me a time buzzer over here, but, uh, anyhow, so we do a lot of work with Maria's Voice and other organizations that I think really pays off. And in addition to that, uh, people who are, um, victims of domestic violence also are offered our free in-home therapy piece. So it's not just other folks that we come into contact with. But I, and I'm trying not to say anything that's going to get me in trouble, but I, I do think there's a, there's an aspect of accountability that needs to take place to better assist us with domestic violence. And it's not for those of us that are putting handcuffs on people. No, no.
I, I, if, if there was something that you wanted from us, I'd love to hear about it. That's why I'm asking the question, not to be facetious.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, I think, you know, support that you all, you all offer, um, to us in public health, I think is invaluable. Um, we just got to figure out, um, a different accountability system that's outside of, um, when they leave our jails.
Council, additional questions of the chief? Well, thanks much for being here with us this evening. Uh, extend our thanks, our heartfelt thanks to the rest of your command staff and all of your officers for the great work that you guys do. We, we really do appreciate it and, uh, looking forward to continuing to hear all this good news and seeing all the awards you're winning and everything else. So well done. Thanks much for being here tonight.
So Mayor and Counsel, I'm going to close on this. Um, obviously, my three-year anniversary comes up here next week. Um, and one of the things that, when I took this job, um, a bunch of regional chiefs had told us, that when you take one of these jobs, that you should write down the most common question that you're asked in a police chief role. Um, and it's funny, like, I just talked to these folks the other day, and the most, two most common questions I've been asked is, does this council support me and the police department? Um, I've been asked that question in the last three years nine hundred and thirty-two times. And, um, how is our staffing? I've been asked that question two hundred and fifteen times. And my answer is the same. This council, um, has been nothing but good to me and this police department since I've been here for the last three years. And I just want to thank you for that, um, continued support. And all of our department heads, uh, we have some of the best people, I believe, in running this city. And, uh, none of us would be able to do any of that if we didn't have your support. And that also helps with, uh, retaining top talent in what I believe is the best city in Minnesota. So again, thank you for all that you do. And I know it's not easy running for office and winning and actually having to deal with a lot of these complaints and stuff you get from citizens. So, thanks.
Thanks, Chief. Our final item this evening, counsel, is item five point two, our city council policy and issue updates. Now typically, this is where I'd recap our listening session, but of course, we didn't have a listening session tonight. So what I'm going to do is kind of, uh, I'm going to take a, a mayor's prerogative. We have, the only non-staff members remaining in our council chambers right now are students from a, a, chambers right now are students from a, a University of Minnesota student, class called Engineering Economics, and they're here with us this evening. And you stuck it out. We typically go a lot later than this. So you got a good evening too. But you know what? If you guys are up to it, I'd like to welcome you up here and introduce yourselves and, and tell us exactly why you're here. Why, why you're listening to the Bloomington City Council meeting on the 31st day of March. So first of all, why don't you all introduce yourselves and then, then just an explanation of why you're here, what you're, what you're hoping to learn.
Yeah. My name is John Race. I'm a civil engineering major from University of Minnesota.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Karp. I'm also a civil engineering major at the U of M.
It's nice to be here. I'm Jack Carlson. Same.
I'm Sidney Heinzleman, and I'm a geoengineering major.
And why are you here?
Yeah, we're taking a course called Engineering Economics and Project Management, and we focused a lot on municipal engineering and a lot of the infrastructure projects going on in Minnesota right now. And so we were tasked with choosing a city, and so we chose the city of Bloomington, just to come and sit in on a city council meeting, see what your guys' priorities were, and more importantly, on the engineering and infrastructure side, see where you guys were looking for. So if you don't mind, if we ask you a question.
Please.
What, what sort of infrastructure projects are you guys looking forward to in the coming, in the, in the future, and this year specifically? Well, where are your priorities at in terms of infrastructure?
We, we, we do have one of our city engineers in the back, the city, oh, the, the city engineer in the back. I, I will tell you in general, and then Julie can correct you anything, we're, we're doing a lot of, a variety of things, actually. So the Bloomington Ice Garden is doing, it's a complete renovation, which, everything from new cooling units to redoing, you know, shrinking the size of one of the ranks to just a complete redo of the, the building, basically. So I mean, you're thinking about that in terms of what we're doing. We're also designing and building a new community center, so a brand new from the start, a community center, which is a, an enormous project we have underway. And we're also looking at doing a, an ecological and sustainable and biological redo of the Nine Mile Creek Corridor. And so looking at, you know, how to best contain invasive species, how to deal with the, the creek meander, and how to deal with the erosion of banks and that kind of thing. On top of everything else that the city typically does, including, you know, streets and, and all kinds of construction projects, the other big thing we're, we're dealing with citywide here is so many of our commercial areas that we're looking to redevelopment, they were redeveloped, they were commercial areas, and if it's a, if it's a shopping center or, you know, a commercial area, the, the sewer capacity is one size. If we hope to redevelop it with residential, we need a much bigger sewer capacity. And, and so we're looking at expanding that. And the trick there is, of course, as you know, depending on, you know, gravity and flow, it, it's not just in that area that we're looking to redevelop. It needs to be, it needs to make its way downstream until we can match it up with a larger pipe and/or with a, with a pipe that will handle the, with the capacity that we need. So Julie, what did I miss? Anything else? Or, no, she says that's fine. She's not getting up here. So, so those are the big things that we're working on. And now, have you had a chance to meet with our engineering staff at all?
No, we have not.
Well, tour, are we, we, we're gonna get you, you know, if you guys are up to it, we'd be happy to roll out the red carpet. And I'm speaking for Julie there. She's looking at me and shooting daggers right now. But you can, we'd love to have you meet with them. We'd love to have you tour some of our facilities, our water plant. We have the best water in Minnesota. And that's not us saying that. That's by contest. And so you can, we'd love to have you take a look at that. And we'd, we'd love to help you any way that we possibly could.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much again for the opportunity to be here and sit down on this meeting.
So now, are you guys, is it your folks? Do you do the, the Christmas lights that go to the music? Or is that, is that the electrical?
That's outside our building.
That's outside your building. But is that the electrical engineers? Or is that the?
Anyone in engineering.
Every, and all the engineers. That's great. That was always, that was always fun to watch. So well done with that. Council, any questions of our students this evening?
No, I just wanted to say thanks for coming. And I, I'm not, you wouldn't be the first people that we put in touch with Julie for informational interviews on what it's like to be an engineer in this, in a city. So by all means, get your, get your information to her because, you know, we were always looking for good resources. If you want to come to work for the city of Bloomington, we'd love to have you. The other thing I would recommend is in our capital, our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan, every year it gets revised. And you can see a lot of the things that are up front, some of the things that, that the mayor didn't mention. We have a new fleet garage. We just finished a, a fire station. We have to build them more because, you know, there's a need for better fire stations to house the full-time fire department, as well as the new trucks and their capacity and their size and everything like that. So there's a lot of like, just growing into the city we've become that is all throughout that plan, if you had the chance to take a look. And I'm gonna make a plug for the park system master plan because I'm a, I'm a huge fan of it. We've got Bryant Park, we have Tretba Park, and we had Smith Park last year. Twenty different parks that we, over the next, you know, 20 or 30 years, we're gonna completely revise. So if you're inclined to do engineering work of an outdoor nature, take a look at some of those. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just one, two quick things. Two. If you look at our consent agenda, if you didn't have a chance to look at it tonight, we approved a central sanitary sewer capacity project, a PMP seal coating process, and a water tank and equipment. You know, so a lot of what we do is, I think, aligned with what you're doing. But my question for you is, what is the economics part of your course? Because I, I kind of understand the, the engineering side, but how do you integrate that with the economics?
Sure, absolutely. So looking at municipal projects, the economic side of it was financing these projects, studying bonds, performance bonds, and seeing how cities like yourselves pay for these projects? Absolutely.
Anything else, Councilmember, Councilmember Loman?
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll ask, you know, kind of a variation of what the mayor asked, but, you know, now you've seen this and you've been at your classes, what are you, what are you guys planning on doing with your, with your degrees and when you leave, if you even have plans?
Sure. You want to start? Yeah, I have a semester or two left, but I have a pretty good gig going right now with a private consulting firm. Probably just gonna end up there once I graduate.
Likewise, I currently have an internship with a, the private engineering consulting firm that I'll continue. And I'll be commissioning to the Minnesota National Guard as an officer next year. And so I'm really looking forward to that and serving, serving the state and the country.
I just got some exciting news a few weeks ago. Got an internship at Mindot. So like, bridge inspection, it'll be a real great opportunity next summer.
Fabulous.
Is this one on? Last summer, I interned, and I'm gonna do it again this summer, in renewable energy. So I help with solar, wind, and also energy storage, looking at the soil and rocks that hold all the, so.
Well, fabulous. And, and the final question, I mean, did you self-select your group or were you assigned? Did you all know each other?
We were assigned.
You were assigned, yeah.
Obviously, we know of each other, but we were like the last four people in the back of the room. We picked each other, but it wasn't.
That's a lesson to learn. Lesson to learn. Well, good. Well, thanks so very much for being here tonight. Thanks for sticking it out with us. And like I said, let us know what we can do to help. If you need more information, if you want tours, if you want to talk to some of our staff members who are more interesting than we are and more interesting than sitting here for two hours, we'd, we're more than happy to set it up with you. We really are. And I know the big thing you need is a picture to prove that you were here, right? So, hold on.
Although you have now video that you can point to.
YouTube video?
You want us in the background?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, in the background. Everybody in the background.
Say, go golfers. Got it. Thank you.
That is all I have. Ms. Edie, do you have anything to add tonight on item 5.2?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, I would love to spend a couple more minutes just giving an update on where, where our teams are at with some of our legislative work. So as you know, we, we both make requests at the state level and at the federal level. So I'll focus on three of our federal projects. This week, staff completed three applications for congressionally-directed spending requests to the Office of Senator Klobuchar for the fiscal year 2026. This is a funding opportunity that allows Congress to request funds in the annual federal budget to be allocated for specific projects in their states. We expect the same will go forward through Senator Smith, Smith and Representative Morrison as well. So we look forward to those applications. The first project is the booster station. These are all projects connected to engineering, by the way. Booster station pump replacement, which is around drinking water infrastructure project. That's $1.5 million ask. We applied last year, but last year, Congress excluded all requests from the 25 appropriations. And so we are hopeful this year, we hear that water is something that people are agreeing on. And so we're, we're hopeful that this one will go through this time. This replaces our aging pumps, our motors, our controls at the Poplar Bridge and 82nd Street booster stations, and enables a reliable drinking water, which we know is the best in the state. It supports firefighting operations and improves system efficiency. So we are excited about that. And then, of course, it also helps to reduce costs, energy efficiency, and more opportunity to manage the system pressure that we have. You all know about the many water main breaks that we've had this year. So hopefully it improves that. Number two is our North Central Sanitary Sewer Project, $4 million requested. It's a total project of $26 million. We do have a state bonding request for this project in the amount of $13 million. And our utility superintendent, Scott Anderson, along with the mayor, along with Representative Coulter, provided testimony at the House Capital Investment Committee earlier this month in support of this request. And we are anticipating an invitation to do the same with the Senate this year as well. So this project actually expands our sewer capacity that we mentioned to accommodate our higher density redevelopment. This is something that is needed in our community, specifically the Penn American District, enabling new housing and commercial developments that benefit residents, our businesses and our visitors. And finally, the Normandale Boulevard Sidewalk and Trail Project, a $1 million request toward a $9.8 million project is this specific request. It enhances safety by improving intersections along the corridor, including construction of a three-quarter intersection that reduces the number of conflict points. It closes a key gap in the local trail network, improving pedestrian and cyclist access, and improves safety within the walking boundary of at least five schools. This brings our sidewalks and trails up to ADA standards as well, ensuring that we are more accessible for all. So those are three big projects. We're very hopeful that these get some attention and some funding at the federal level and some at the state level as well.
Thank you for the update. Council, any questions? Very good. Council, anything to add on the policy and issues update? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It, Mayor, you and I have been involved in this, but the freeway dump in Burnsville has come up for conversations again. There's pushing for redevelopment, but redevelopment, to my understanding, without removing the, the trash from that site. And, you know, I have some concerns about that, obviously, given the importance of the Minnesota River to Bloomington with, you know, our recreation and natural space. Obviously downstream, we got the National Wildlife Refuge and things like that. And so if, if possible, I'd love to just get some more information from staff on if they've looked at that, if they've looked at the proposal, how it might impact us. You know, I understand the desire of Burnsville and Dakota County to develop that site. It's, it's, you know, a logical place. And frankly, the proposal for the development looks pretty cool. Pickleball and golf and, you know, looks really fun. But I, I have a concern about not removing the dump. And, and, you know, I know we were often at Burnsville with regards to Trash Mountain and, you know, relocating that over to the Waste Management Facility and things of that nature. And so, I, you know, I just, anyways, I just would like more information on where that's at, if the city has information on, on it as well. So we got a balanced viewpoint of it.
Thanks for bringing that forward, Councilmember. I hadn't heard that. And so, yes, if, if we could gather some information for that, that'd be appreciated. Are those councilmembers? All right. If not, we have completed our agenda, Council. I would look for a motion to adjourn tonight. Motion by Councilmember Alessandro, second by Councilmember Mu to adjourn tonight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed motion carries. We are adjourned. Thanks much, Council, for the discussion tonight. Thanks to the staff. Thanks to everybody who participated. Everybody have a great Tuesday and the rest of your week. Thanks.